Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, General Committee Meeting to Order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Creason, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Fochey.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Creason.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not with us. Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Dyssard is not with us. Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here. Thank you. Agenda item number 2.1 is the Academic Games National Team Presentation, and we have Ms. Lametta with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm just going to quickly turn this corner right now. I only expect to see national champion, so I'm just going to turn it as well, so you all can see we have a national champion and national runner-up. And our national champion is a two-year-in-a-row national champion, so...
So, good evening. It's my honor, of course, to present to you tonight some remarkable students. They're truly exceptional, our Academic Games National Teams and their coaches. And as you know, these young people recently traveled to Arlington, Virginia, to compete in the National Academic Games Tournament. This competition brings together thousands of the brightest minds from across the country, students who've spent countless hours mastering logic, mathematics, language, social studies, and critical thinking. To even qualify for this event is a major accomplishment. I'm thrilled to share that one of our students earned the title of Individual National Champion in Propaganda for the second year in a row. That's a distinction that represents the highest level of achievement in the Academic Games Leave America. In addition, one of our teams was the national runner-up in Presidents. Their collaboration and commitment to excellence stood out at the national stage, and their success is a reflection of their hard work and their dedication. But beyond the awards and trophies, these students have shown something even more impressive: the resilience to persevere and the ability to compete with integrity and grace. These are the qualities that will carry them far beyond any classroom or any competition. To our coaches, thank you so much for your tireless efforts and your belief in each student's potential and your passion for education. To the parents, thank you for the encouragement and support that you did, you gave, to make this journey possible for the students. And to our students, you inspire us, and tonight we celebrate not just your victories, but your journey. You've made us so proud, not just with your achievements, but with your character. As an example, when the elementary and middle school students made the playoffs, the high school students took their time to sit with them. In the next meeting, we'll have the super news with some photos, and you'll see each elementary student had a high school student with them, coaching them and helping them on for the playoffs. And that, when Ms. Hall sent me that picture from Arlington, it, you know, it kind of got to me, because to see our former players, when they were young, now sitting with each young student, trying to pass that on and do whatever they could to help the younger students succeed, that's what we're all about. It's a big family, and they do whatever they can to help each other. So, you'll get to see a glimpse of that in super news next week. And finally, as I mentioned last tournament, last meeting, we're truly grateful for the longstanding support that we've received from Shellmet Refining over the years. Their generous contribution significantly offset the cost of our national tournament for the parents and the coaches, so they could all focus on preparing for the tournament without fundraising. So now to the awards. As I announce the coaches, teams, and players, I'll also announce the awards they earned. And just for clarity, because there are so many students and teams in each division at the national tournament, Academic Games thinkers are awarded to teams up to sixth place, because there are thousands of students in this competition. Because there are so many individuals, students are given medals for top 20 places in the games and top 10 places in sweeps. Now, just a reminder, sweeps looks at each game you play and the place you earn in the game. So if you win first place and second place in a game, you're going to higher sweep score. So when a student or a team wins sweeps, that means combining all four games, they did really well in the all-four games. So now it's my pleasure to introduce to you the national coaches and players. And as I announce each coach and player, please come forward, and you'll receive a proclamation and shake hands with the board members. So we'll start off with our high school team. We have our junior and senior division, and we'll start off with high school coach, Ms. Abby Schilling. What we got for the coaches was a plaque with their picture of the team from the tournament. And this is another thing, it's an amazing thing. We got an action shot of them with the students, so I know they do treasure this. And our other high school coach, Ms. Jada Alfonso, couldn't be with us tonight, but we do have Mr. Jonathan Palazola as our high school coach. And we have our junior team first, Connor Dewey. Connor gave up going to eat one night of the tournament to work with one of the elementary students, Elvin Chavez, who was in the playoffs. Jenna Jamore. Hannah Ramsey. Ibrahim Sharaf. And Carter Tran. And now we have the senior division team, Trey Myers. Christian Miller. Kimberly Quintanilla. Kevin Roussel. And Christian Thomas. And now we have the elementary division team. They won fifth-place Equations Team Award, seventh-place Propaganda Team Award, an On Sets Perfect Score Award, and 10th-place Overall Individual in Sweeps. So we start off with our elementary division coach, Melinda Hall. And now the elementary team members, Jonah Capstick. Michael Leggett. Theodore Schilling. Dominic Shreve. And Andy Doe. In addition to the team awards, Andy won 10th-place Overall Sweeps and On Sets Perfect Score. And now we have our middle division team. And we have, the middle division has a National Championship Individual Winner in Propaganda, National Runner-Up Team in Presidents, third-place Individual On Sets Award, fifth-place Individual Presidents Award, fifth-place On Sets Team Award, fifth-place Propaganda Team Award, and sixth-place Overall Individual Sweeps Award. And we have the middle school division coach, Ms. Lori Gilchrist. And now the middle school team members, Evelyn Doe. Jay Jamore. Kenneth Higginbotham. And next we have Elvin Chavez Escobar. In addition to the team awards, Elvin won third-place Individual in On Sets, third place in the nation. And our final middle school winner is second year in a row, in addition to the team award, National Champion Individual in Propaganda, two years in a row, fifth-place Individual Award for Presidents, sixth place overall in sweeps. Out of all the students in the middle division in the country, sixth place overall in sweeps, Jack McMullin. And our final proclamation is for Ms. Alicia Capstick. She went to handle all the logistics and take care of everything so the coaches could just focus on the players and doing the coaching. So, Ms. Capstick.
That's it. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Lametta, thank you for this incredible presentation and for your leadership over the Academic Games programs. I know that you have led this for many years, the tournaments and all the elements, so we want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. It's truly a privilege to know you. Thank you.
To all of the students, we send our heartfelt congratulations. You all have made us so proud, not just in the awards that you earned, but the way that you represent your schools in St. Bernard Parish. We are so incredibly proud. Every year when you all come back, we just, we can't wait to see you all and celebrate. So, congratulations. And again, like Ms. Lametta mentioned, the time and dedication from our staff members that lead these individual teams, all of the practices, nights, weekends, summer, it's truly a labor of love. And so to all of the staff members who have led Academic Games this year, we thank you for your dedication and your leadership. And to the families, thank you all for being here with us, for entrusting us with your children, and for all of the support and guidance that you give to your children and the support that you give to this program. Thank you so much. And to our sponsor that made this trip possible, like Ms. Lametta mentioned, Shellmet Refining PBF Energy sponsors this travel so that we do not have to ask our students to fundraise throughout the year. So we want to give them a round of applause again and thank them. Any other board members? Fochey?
Well, I think Dr. Lemoine has just said everything there is to say, and at the risk of being repetitive, I do believe in all the years that I have been here and been involved in Academic Games. Even I played them when I was in high school, in the Dark Ages. And as we progress through the many years of competition at the national level, we are much prouder of our students for the character they display, for their... You know, when you send kids away anywhere, you worry. You worry as parents that everything's going to be okay. We also worry that they're going to, are they going to remember everything that they have learned in their families and in the school system? To be good competitors, to be good people, to be people of character, people of integrity, people that are, I guess, our community can be proud of. And I am so proud of this group of young people who have displayed all of these qualities. And that is what's most important to us, I think, at this time in our lives. And these types of competitions give them the basis and help them to develop the poise. And I'm very competitive, as most people who know me realize I am. And you always want to win. But over the years, I've realized it's much more important things than winning. The development of your character, your potential, giving you the tools and the skills necessary to be good community members and to be successful in life are the most important things. So thank you, parents, because you started that whole journey with us, and we've played a part in helping to develop those characteristics in your children. So it's tremendous partnership. Thank you and congratulations.
Any other board members? And to our seniors who celebrated their graduation last night, congratulations. We hope you stay involved with the program and cheer us on. And to Ms. Hall, who is retiring, you have been so committed to Academic Games throughout the years, so thank you for your service. And we hope that you return as a volunteer. No pressure.
I'll see to it. I will see to it.
Oh, no. It's a lot of pressure. It's a lot of pressure.
Yes.
She's retiring in October, and we expect her the next day to be there as a volunteer in helping with the Academic Games program.
We've already worked it out. She knows the expectation.
Well, thank you all and congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number three is an Education Committee item. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mrs. Lemoine. 3.1 is Review of Literacy Screener Data. Hello. How are you, Dr. Salto Lamachia?
Good.
Good, good.
So every year, I present on our literacy scores throughout the year, how our students have gone and where we started, where we're kind of ending up. We saw a little bit of summer and all in there, but... So with Act 428, we have to screen our kindergarten through third grade students three times a year, in the fall, in the winter, and then again in the spring. So we typically do that August, December, and then in April again. So we're just finishing up our spring screeners. The literacy screener that we use, which is approved by the state, is DIBELS 8, and it is a test of all the different progressions of reading, starting with phonemic awareness, all the way through reading comprehension. As students start out as young, emerging readers, they are really just listening for sounds and words. As people speak with them and communicate with them, they learn those sounds. And then as they go throughout the reading progression process, it goes on to phonics, where they put it into writing, vocabulary, fluency, and then, of course, comprehension. And the reason our foundational assessment is so important, as students get older, you know, everything that they read is, they have to be able to comprehend. So if we don't have really strong foundational, those early literacy skills in place, our students will struggle later on. You know, I always say to the teachers, the administrators, and the students, and parents alike, everyone is a reading teacher. Whether they're teaching math, or they're teaching social studies, we all, the students still have to be able to read in order to be able to, you know, do those content areas. So looking at our scores this year, I'm very happy and excited for our students. And there's a couple of reasons that I feel like our scores are really starting to improve, and many reasons. But this is our second year that we have our scripted intervention programs in place. So our students are benefiting from our teachers having that training and really deeply diving into the scripted curriculum. So even if I'm a new little teacher right out of college, or I'm in Teach St. Bernard Altar Program, or I'm a veteran teacher, it is scripted for me. It really digs into, if a student is lacking in this skill, what should I do next? And it's kind of a little, it's a guide for teachers. And you know, as teachers, I've been in education a long time, to start out and really have that guide to help you, along with all of our supports, really is making a difference with our youngest kids, which we hope as our kids get older, we're going to see that in their LEAP scores, in their ACT scores, and throughout, you know, their school career. So looking at the scores, at our kindergarten scores, 67% of our kindergartners are scoring on or above level on the end-of-the-year screener. Our special education students, 36% of them are scoring on and above level. And our LEAP students, our L students, 66%. And we do do, you know, in our younger grades, full immersion, you know, with our L students, and we really see that as a benefit for those students, for all of our students, of course. First, our first grade is 77% of the students scored on and above level. 59% of our special education students in first grade scored on and above level. And again, I'll point back to those first grade students. This is their second year in that scripted intervention program. So we're really starting to see it, you know, really help those students. Second grade, 68% of our students scored on or above level, 40% of our special education students, and 59% of our LEAP students. For third grade, 69% of the students scored on or above, 33% of our special education students, and 75% of our LEAP students. In addition to our literacy screener, our third grade students also take LEAP. So we're excited to see what their scores are going to look like. This year, Act 422 requires that our third grade students pass the literacy screener in order to be promoted. So what I mean by pass is if they score well below, in the lowest achievement level, we have to assess them three times. So we assess them in April, and if they scored well below, we're getting ready to assess them again at the end of the week, actually, May 16th. And then, we will continue to remediate for the students who are still scoring at that lowest achievement, and they will be reassessed at the end of our summer learning program. The students who did score well below, we also, some of those students, half, almost half of those students are falling onto what we call our good cause exemption. So good cause exemption for third grade are things like, if a student has a diagnosis of dyslexia, they are exempt. So we do not retain them for not passing the literacy screener. Now, we're still providing intervention. We're still providing all of those supports, but we're not penalizing the students who have a medical diagnosis for dyslexia. If a student is new to our country, is here within the last two years, we're not going to retain them, those students, because they don't speak our language at the level to be proficient yet. the level to be proficient yet. If a student has an IEP, or if the assessment, if they have an IEP, or the assessment is not appropriate. So, what do I mean by that? The students who would be our LEAP Connect students normally, this assessment, they may be a nonverbal student. This would not be an appropriate assessment for us to say, we're going to retain them in third grade because they're not readers. Correct? So, also, students who, let me see if I left anybody off, who have an IEP or a 504, who have been retained previously. Because we know the statistics, if students are retained multiple times, the statistics stating that they would graduate high school does not look good, right? So, we don't want to retain kids just because they cannot pass a literacy screener that may have a disability. Now, if a student is just retained but does not have a 504 or an IEP, but has been in intensive reading intervention for two years, and we have documentation of that intervention, then, of course, we would not retain those students. So, those are all of our good cause. And if a student does not fall within those good cause exemptions, but then achieves a mastery or a, or advanced on the LEAP test, then they would be promoted also. So, there's many different categories. So, currently, right now, our third graders, we had about 96 students who were well below. Half of those students are good cause exemption. So, those students will not be assessed again. They will have, we have the documentation, they are exempt. Okay? The other half, 47 students, we're reassessing this week. Now, some of our students were one point from being above that, two points, three points. So, I'm excited to see how they do at the end of this week. I wish I would have had those results for y'all today, but the way it fell for them, for the students, we had to do LEAP first for them to be able to be assessed with the literacy screener. So, with that being said, I also want, one thing I wanted to share with y'all, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, how much growth we've seen with our kids. And this is what I'm super excited about. Our kindergartners in August, 35% of them were on or above level. Now, 67%. So, that is a growth of 32% growth in our kindergartners. In the first grade, 55%, now 77%, 22% growth. Second grade, 56% in the beginning of the year, now 68%, 12% growth. And our third grade is 63% to 69%, 6% growth on the literacy screener. I also looked at how students did in their cohorts. So, what I mean by that is, how were they at the end of kindergarten? And a year later, at the end of first grade, how were they performing? So, our kindergartners who are now first graders, our kindergartners from last year, last year in April, they scored 63%. Now, they're at 77% on or above level. Our first graders who are now second graders, 63%, now at 68%. And our second graders last year scored 57% on or above level, and now, as a third grader, they're at 69%, 12% growth. I would love to take all the pride for this, but it's not, it's not just me. It's our lovely, our hardworking teachers, our administrators. But I also want to introduce y'all to five lovely ladies. This is my literacy team, who I could not do any of this without them. They are, they have been in the trenches. They have boots to the ground. So, I would like to introduce them. This is Erin Johnson. Stand up, Erin. Kayla Russell, Gabby Glapion-Abbey, Michelle O'Neil, and Kayla Serenay.
All right.
And they are the guests. Absolutely. So, um, do y'all have any questions for me or anything that y'all would like to know?
Any questions from board members?
I just want to commend you for the success of our LEP students in particular. I think it's great to see that in relation to the cohort of kids, that they are scoring at the same level. And in some cases, at the third grade, they're scoring above. I think that's wonderful, and hopefully, we'll see that they are set up for, like you said, the passing of the LEAP test. For that group of students in particular is really important. So, thank you for working so hard with them.
Anyone else? Mrs. Lemoine?
Thank you, Mr. Warner, and thank you, Dr. Salto Lamachia, for your presentation. And, you know, I, I think it's so important that the community know that moments like this tonight, showing this growth at every level, the, the year to year and the cohort growth, it's a testament to our commitment as a school system to the foundation of literacy with investing in our fantastic literacy coaches, our literacy angels-
Yes.
-that are going into the schools and really doing triage like detectives to, to, you know, discover what are these little pieces, these building blocks of literacy that are missing, and how can we go in and shore up those skills so that we make sure that every, every student is able to read. So, um, thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for your leadership over this effort.
Thank you.
Ms. Fuch.
I just, again, want to echo the statements of some of the board members. These five individuals and great educators have made a tremendous difference in the program that we began under Dr. Salto Lamachia's supervision, has really proved fruitful. And I think they're looked at, when they go in the classroom, as support for the teachers, providing intervention strategies, modeling those strategies. And I think we're seeing the fruits of their labors, as well as our regular teachers in the classroom, because it is definitely, you know, a team effort. I think Ms. Harris pointing out the limited English proficiency students, and it, it shows if we, if they're coming at a very young age, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and we fully immerse them in the language and in the coursework, they can, it makes a tremendous difference, difference. They can become fluent and good readers immediately. It's a little bit more difficult when students enter at the middle and high school level to accomplish that. But if we can get these children to progress at the rate, and it seems like they are, I mean, that's a tremendous accomplishment. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for the tremendous work that you do and the growth that we're seeing in our students.
Thank you very much, Dr. Salto Lamachia, for bringing the A-team with you.
Yes.
The angels, I think it's the superheroes, right? They need capes and everything else. It's, they do a wonderful job. Thank you all so much for what you do. We really appreciate you.
Are you going to get them costumes or something? Is that the next step?
I'm sure we have a couple of costumes laying around somewhere around here. But thank you for your presentation. It was very informative. Mrs. Lemoine?
Thank you, Mr. Warner, and thank you all again for being here. Okay, agenda item number 4.1, our personnel changes for May of 2025. And we have Ms. Albers here with us this evening.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. In your folders, you will see the personnel changes since the last board meeting.
Okay. And I do see that we have some retirements that, that we would like to recognize. We want to wish a happy retirement to Ms. Jennifer Johnson from Shellmet High, and Dawn Lala from Transportation. And we want to thank them for their many years of service. And also, we want to wish a very happy retirement to Ms. Lisa Young, who has been the principal of Goche Elementary. I had the privilege of working for Ms. Young at Goche, so I know firsthand her incredible leadership. And we want to congratulate her and thank her for her many years of service. Ms. Fuch, I don't know if you want to share some words there?
You know, when we talk about Ms. Johnson, who's a parent educator at Shellmet High School, we wish her a really good retirement. Dawn Lala in the Transportation Department, I don't know what we're going to do without her, because everybody goes to, she's our dispatcher for the buses and, you know, gets the routes together. And right now, extremely busy working on summer school routes and such. So, she's going to be very difficult to replace. She has done tremendous work in that area, and we're going to sorely miss her. And then, there's Lisa Young, our principal at Goche Elementary School. And she texted me a little while ago and said, be sure you don't, if you say anything, be sure you don't say. And then she listed what I'm not supposed to say. Well, that's typical of Lisa Young, but she's an incredible educator, tremendous leader. I mean, just as everything running in perfect unison over at Goche Elementary School, you're not going to see a school that's better run than that particular elementary school. She's been with us a long time. She grew up in the parish. She attended our public schools here, then became a teacher with us, worked her way through the administrative structure. I mean, and after Katrina, then everybody had to pitch in. I mean, she was there. I think she taught fifth grade with you maybe there?
Maybe.
That's, I think she went back and taught the fifth grade, because we had our administrators going into the classrooms and such. It was quite, quite an enterprise there in the fall of 2005 and spring of 2006. I don't know, you know, what I'm going to do without her little barbs that she sends me every now and then over texting. I'm going to tell her she can continue to do that and take a little more license with it now than maybe she did before. But anyway, we want to wish her well on her retirement and know that we have lost a tremendous educator here. But we know that she's going to be back with us. We're going to force her to volunteer, even if she does not choose to do so, because we know where she lives and we know where we can get to her. So, I want to thank her for all of her many, many years of contributions to our parish and to our children, and to know that she has made a tremendous difference in the lives of very many, many people.
Great. And I think we have some appointments to announce as well.
Yes, I do. First of all, the principal of Goche Elementary School. So, as soon as we got the notification from Ms. Young, we went out and did an advertisement. And I do think, I talked with Shelley Monk this morning. I said, what'd you do, scare everybody off or whatever? But Shelley has been in the St. Bernard Parish School System for 22 years. She started at Goche, obviously, before the storm, then, of course, went to the Unified School where she taught with us as we recovered from Hurricane Katrina, then moved to Andrew Jackson Elementary for that two-year period before we got Goche back up and running. And she's been the assistant principal at Goche for 16 years. So, when we looked at that combination with Lisa and Shelley, I mean, they could, either one could be out, and they didn't miss a beat. And to be perfectly honest, they both could be out, and the school pretty much could run itself at that point. So, I, we're real happy to announce that we are going to appoint Shelley Monk as the principal of Goche Elementary School. So, I want to congratulate Shelley. Now, for Mero Elementary School, the assistant principal, we had several candidates. Ms. Rousell, who is the principal, has conducted interviews. The interview team was Ms. Rousell as the principal. Ms. Corolla sat in on that as well, and so did Ms. Albers, the former principal. They went through the selection process, and we are very happy to announce tonight that one of these young ladies is going to be appointed as the assistant principal of Mero Elementary, Ms. Erin Johnston. Erin, please stand up. Erin has gone through our school system her entire life. I used to call her Ed. I don't know if she remembers that. When she was little, you remember that? Okay. She's been a teacher with us for 20 years. I know you look at her and say, that can't possibly be true. But she has been, and she taught at Davies Elementary. She was at the Unified School with us, again, over at Andrew Jackson for those two years, when we had it functioning as an elementary school, went back to Davies for 15 years and taught at Davies, and then has been a literacy coach and made a tremendous difference the last two years. So, we're very happy and proud to appoint Ms. Erin Johnston as the assistant principal of Mero Elementary. And I'm going to get, I'm going to get very emotional, because I know her dad is looking down on us tonight. Okay?
Well, Erin, I'm so happy that you're here tonight in the audience for this announcement. Congratulations on your appointment. You are so beloved and well-respected by all of your former students, family, staff members. We know you're going to do an incredible job at Mero Elementary, and so, congratulations. And to Shelley Hilton-Munk, my dear friend, we went through college together. We taught, students taught together and got to teach together for many years. I'm so excited and want to offer my heartfelt congratulations to you, Shelley. I hope you're watching. We're so excited for you and so proud of you. So, congratulations. We know you're going to do a wonderful job.
So, we will be advertising for the assistant principal at Goche Elementary School. So, we hope to have that in place by the end of the year, so the team can begin working together at the beginning of summer. And Erin, you'll have to do that transition quickly.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Albers?
That is it for us tonight. And everyone, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Agenda item number five is an insurance committee item. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, it's that time of the year for renewal of flood insurance. I guess Mr. Fernandez is here tonight?
Yes.
He is coming right away.
He's waiting to walk around the crowd.
We had to go through a blockade. Okay, we have our friends from Clements Insurance Services, Mr. Richie Clements and Mr. Timmy Clements here, with the renewal of flood insurance for the period beginning May 31st to 2025 through May 30th, I guess, of next year. And we are recommending the premiums they have presented to us, or they have procured for us. There's a slight decrease. They worked very, very hard and got us about a $600 decrease on our insurance premiums this year. So, we are recommending a renewal of our flood coverage for premium, total premium of $179,719.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Fernandez? Ms. Creason?
So, our coverage remains the same. We paid $600 less.
Yes. Any more questions?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Rodriguez, that we send this to the full board.
Okay.
And we make a little vote here. Okay.
Mr. Camp, Mr. Campbell. Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Mr. Clements.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Okay, agenda item number six, Finance Committee, Ms. Creason.
All right. Moving on, item 6.1 is a request to approve the bid tabulation for Official Journal for the fiscal year July 21st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Okay. In your packets, we are recommending renewal for Official Journal for next fiscal year. In a surprise, we are recommending the St. Bernard Voice.
So, move.
All right. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, a second by Ms. Campbell. Any further questions, comments, discussion? There being none, please cash your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right. Moving on, item number 6.2, request to approve bid tabulation for painting and body repairs for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Okay. Again, for next fiscal year, painting and body repairs, we're recommending Carl Kraft.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lemoine. Any further questions? There being none, please cash your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Item 6.3 is request to approve bid tabulation for gas, diesel, lubricating oil, antifreeze, and transmission fluid for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026.
Okay. For gasoline, diesel, getting oil, et cetera, we recommend a little bid on each item.
Make a-
Make a motion that we accept a low bid on each item, send it to the board, full board with a recommendation.
I'll second. I have a motion by Mr. Warner, a second by Mrs. White. Any further questions? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Item 6.4 is request to approve bid tabulation for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies for fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026.
Okay, get on this side and we are recommending a low bidder on each item.
At least we had more than one bidder.
Yeah, correct.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Well, since it's all the lowest bidder, I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Long. A second by Ms. Lemoine. Any further questions? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Item 6.5 is request to approve tabulation for proposals for a web-based reading language arts guided reading intervention software, K-12, and reading language arts skills development software, K-12, for one year with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods.
Okay. This is an RFP, which means there are additional factors other than price that we considered. We had a committee led by Ms. Carla Corolla, who's here to answer any questions you might have on this issue. They, her committee evaluated the proposals and they came up with a recommendation for developmental software, Lexia, and guided reading software, Renaissance.
Ms. Corolla, if you want to come in.
So our committee with Dr. Sublimation, who's our literacy supervisor, myself, and also Amy White Stein, who is our ELA curriculum person. And this is the tabulation of our three rubrics that we examined, basically the items that we need, the components that we really need in the program. And so Lexia was the one that we chose for the developmental software. And Renaissance has different components that we've all used before, and some of our middle schoolers use it, some of our, a few of our high schoolers use it, certain components of it. So those were the two that were the top, top choices for us.
Can I make a motion to accept Lexia and Renaissance? I have a motion by Mrs. White. I have a second by Ms. Rodney. Do we have any questions or comments? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you very much, Liam. All right, item 6.6 is the summary of surplus vehicles and equipment auction results.
Okay, as you recall, a while back, the board declared surplus equipment that we put out for auction and attached in your exhibit is a result of the different items and the total amount that we generated exclusive of the auctioneer's commission, which was 15% and other expenses. We received a total of $130,940.
Did we get rid of everything that we were attempting to auction?
Yes. I think there were a few things that weren't bid on, but they were.
But mostly we were able to.
The things of value were bid on and we, and we were able to get rid of.
And we use things until it really has no use for life.
So the rest of it, Mr. Fernandez, winds up in the landfill? Is that what happens?
Pretty much, yes.
That's fine.
Mr. Fernandez, you need a board action on this to approve it?
It's, it's basically informational.
Just information?
For your information, you've already authorized the sale of the items, the auction of the items, so it's just basically informational. You can accept it, but it's basically good for your information.
It's good that we were able to pick up $130,000.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, do you have any other questions or comments?
Good job, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you. I really didn't do very much. I'll take the praise.
All right, item 6.7 is consideration of adoption of 2025 millage rates.
Okay, in your package, in your packets are the, is the resolution. Every year at this time, we adopt our millage rates and provide the resolution to the assessor so it can be applied against the assessed values of property in the parish. We are adopting the same millage rates from the previous year, so we're just re-adopting the current millage rate. We're recommending that you re-adopt the current millage rate.
Do I need to read the entire resolution or do we do that? Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we send this, send the administration's recommendation to the full board with, for approval.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, a second by Ms. Lee Bowman. Do we have any other questions? Nope, there being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right, item 6.8 is consideration of adoption of 2025, 2026 general fund and special revenue funds budgets, including salary schedules.
Okay, in your packets, the proposed 25, 26 budgets, there are six exhibits. The first five, oh, the first four relate to the general fund. Number one is a summary of revenues and expenditures and ending fund balance, other uses and finance exhausts and uses. Number two is a detail of revenues, proposed revenues budget. Number three is the proposed expenditures. Number four just shows employee benefits compared to the previous year and this year are the proposed for next year. Number five, all the salary schedules, which we are also asking you to adopt. The salary schedules basically haven't changed. They're the current salary schedules that are approved in our current employee contract. And six is the special revenue funds budgets. Just go over the highlights. Basically a conservative budget. We are budgeting based on the current staffing levels that are proposed for next year. We increased sales tax revenues a little bit in next year's budget because we're seeing a trend, an increase from our previous projection, and we think we can maintain that in the next year. We have the proposed MFP, auto-projected MFP total for next year, the minimum foundation program total for next year, so that's included in this budget. And in terms of the expenditures, it basically shows the, like I said, the staffing, current staffing changes in as employees move up the salary schedule from year to year. We did have a slight decrease in the retirement rates for next year, so we did have some savings. You'll see that in Exhibit 4, that there was some savings in retirement, teachers and school employees retirement rates, but also there was, we're projecting an increase in group insurance premiums, so that offsets the decrease slightly. So other than that, we also have the special revenue funds budgets, which is based on the allocations that we know that we have been provided by the state for the different grants. The Avalar Maintenance Fund is the millage that we collect, that the voters approve for, to go towards maintenance of our buildings and facilities. And then there's all the different federal grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, and like, and then the Lunch Fund is the final one on the last page. But those are all our federal grants, all our special revenue funds, and we feel that basically represents the allocations that we're going to get next year and how they'll be, would be budgeted. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Fernandez? Yes, Mr. Long.
Mr. Fernandez, you expect the full funding of Head Start next year?
They've given us an allocation for next year. We don't expect any decrease. They don't anticipate there's going to be any increases at this time.
I heard there was going to be a federal cut in the Head Start program.
Not that they've indicated to us yet.
I'm sorry?
Not that they've indicated.
There is talk about nationally, about cutting some of these federal grants. I know there's been some talk about the Head Start. There's also talk about Title II funding and also somewhat Title I funding. So I think everybody's kind of waiting till the dust settles to see what's going to happen. So we need to proceed, we're proceeding as if these will be in place, some of which we've gotten award letters, but that doesn't really mean it will continue to be in existence. And then we will have to adjust if any of those cuts do come down.
So we do have a Plan B in case, in case those cuts are cut?
A very austere Plan B, but yes, we did.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion now. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, what about funding our, a program at Nunez, some of those programs?
Dual enrollment?
The dual enrollment program?
We get an allocation from the state through the MFP, supplemental cost allocation that funds part of that, and we also have CDF funds that come through the state that also form a formal portion of that, fund a portion of that as well.
But as you know, we're approaching the point, as that program continues to expand and the increased costs associated with the program, just like everything else that's happening at the state level now, if the funding for those dual enrollment programs does not keep up with the demand, then we're going to be half, we're going to have to begin making adjustments in that area as well. I mean, it's a tremendous program. It's a great program. Today, we had, you know, the luncheon that we talked about, about that Leap Connect program that we're starting at Nunez for those children with significant disabilities. Some of the funding of our dual enrollment funds will be put toward that program as well. And it is, it's really sad, and we've mentioned this before, but with the state's new accountability program, they have de-emphasized dual enrollment. You know, for a student to get any credit for that particular indicator, they've got to score 20 on their ACT and take two courses. So as we, as we were all at, you know, graduation last night and heard the incredible statistics that our partnership with Nunez have earned, our kids have earned tremendous numbers of dual enrollment credits toward either a four-year university or a career in tech ed program. We had seven students last night who graduated with not only their high school diploma, but with an associate degree from Nunez. And that meant they have 60 credit hours in college, so the first two years of college they've already completed. And that's a tremendous start for them on their way, but for their parents too, in terms of, just think of the cost of a four-year college degree, and you've got the first two years already under your belt and paid for before your child sets foot on a college campus. So it's a tremendous program. We have hundreds of kids who have anywhere from three to six credit hours, 30 hours, which is a full semester. I think last night, we heard 109 of our kids in that graduating class also participated in the closing ceremonies at Nunez Community College because they have earned certifications and degrees from Nunez as well. So it is a tremendous program that we feel is being de-emphasized in the, at the state level with this new accountability formula. But we are committed, and I know this board is committed because we've had those discussions many times, we need to continue those programs here. So I guess it's a long, roundabout way of saying, yes, we have some dual enrollment dollars provided by the state. We had gotten a grant through the ESER funding, a competitive grant that was called the Reimagine, where we had a million and a half dollars over a three-year period. We were able to increase those offerings for kids. Of course, that grant has run out as some of this other federal funding has, and we are taking a look at what we can do for our kids. So it will be a commitment, and to be honest, we may have to partner with some of our business and community members who may have a stake in a particular career in tech ed pathway to help fund those pathways for those kids. So we're in discussions with that every day, and just as we're waiting for the dust, the dust to settle on a national level, we're still having those conversations at the state level because sometimes we have disagreements on what is important for state funding and what is not quite as important. So we're going to keep pushing, Mr. Warner, and keep pushing and keep pushing and fund as much as we can for our kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we send the budgets to the full board.
We have a motion by Ms. Lemoine.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Lemoine. Any other questions, comments? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Thank you, Ms. Creason and Mr. Fernandez. Agenda item number 7.1 is the consideration of an MOU to amend Section 10.10 of the agreement between St. Bernard Association of Educators and the St. Bernard Parish School Board. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Any further questions? Please cast your vote.
I think we need, let's do a roll call vote to go into executive session. Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Campbell. Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Creason.
Yay.
Ms. Lee Bowman. Mr. Long.
Four.
Dr. Lemoine.
Four.
Ms. Rodney.
Four.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Four.
Mr. Warner.
Four.
And Ms. White.
Four.
Okay, unanimous?
Are we going to sit in here, stay in here?
What?
Or are we staying in here?
Yeah, we're going to stay in here. We're just going to close those doors, Mr. Fernandez, or you can, somebody can help us close.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Long. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, agenda item number eight is superintendent's notes. Ms. Vuchek.
Okay, I just want to remind everyone, we had the potential or the proposed 2025, 26 general fund and special revenue funds budget was introduced today in committee meeting at 5:00 on May 27th. We will have a public hearing on the budgets. If anyone wishes to come and comment or speak about it, they're perfectly welcome to do so at the public hearing. We've had a lot going on, you know, these last few days, these last couple of weeks, and in the sprint to the end of the school year. I mean, we had a great graduation last night, almost 570 kids and a few thousand family relatives. It was just a wonderful event, very well done. I think everyone was very pleased last night. We started something last year with the graduation walk that the students or the seniors did do. Oh, look, Jack has put up a little footage of that, that they did last Thursday where all of the seniors who wished to participate visited all of the, the elementary schools that they went to, and if they did not attend an elementary school... And if they did not attend an elementary school, they got to choose which one they would like to go to, and some of them have sibling, younger siblings at the schools. So, it was a great event. I mean, our seniors were thrilled, the younger students were actually thrilled, and they got together, different types of things to welcome our seniors. And I think those who were most thrilled were the teachers, who, who had taught these young people at the elementary level and are now seeing them as young adults moving on to either college career or service to our country. So, it was a wonderful event. And that took place last Thursday. Also, last Thursday, Project Graduation was a success. I was talking with someone today who had volunteered with that. We had a couple of hundred kids there who really had a good time all night. And I think her comment to me was how much fun they had in playing games and doing things that you just wouldn't think young people would be interested in today. They just kind of reverted to their younger selves and had just a good, good, clean time with their friends. So, great, great, excuse me, I've got something in my throat. I mentioned earlier, we have that luncheon for our Leap Connect students, our students with significant disabilities, and we're very excited to launch that program this coming semester. Mr. Cipollone, who's our supervisor of special education, has already met with the parents and families of some of the students who will begin that program in August, and I think we're very, very excited about that. Want to remind everyone that on Tuesday, May 20th, we'll have our eighth grade exit ceremonies at the Civic Center, and all three of the eighth grade classes will, I think 9:00 will be St. Bernard Middle, followed by Andrew Jackson at 11:00, followed by Tris at 1:00 P.M. So, that's going to be a wonderful day, celebrating all of our eighth graders as they exit and move on to high school. The next day on Wednesday, May the 21st, our kindergarten and fifth grade ceremonies will occur at their school sites during the day. The last day for our students will then be the following day, on Thursday, May 22nd. And then, our teachers will come back on Friday, May 23rd, for their last day, Records Day, as they get all of their records together for the end of the school year. And then, of course, the following Thursday, May 29th, we start our Summer Skills Program. So, we don't stop. We go from ending the school year directly into the summer programs. And I just want to mention that this Friday, on May 16th in Baton Rouge, the statewide Students of the Year will be announced, and we have a finalist in the high school category, Trey Myers, and the eighth grade middle school category, Rami Dali. And each one of them is only one of eight students in the state who are finalists for that state Student of the Year. So, we'll be following that announcement this coming Friday as well. So, got a lot going on.
And so much to celebrate.
So much to celebrate. And, you know, we, we celebrated our academic games group, and I know that we've posted this, but we haven't had a board meeting since, and our Pro Start students in the Business and Management section won the first place in Louisiana as, with the best team, number one in the state, and then went on to Baltimore to participate in Nationals, and were number one in the country. So, we beat every state in the United States. They all sent teams up to Baltimore, and we're very, very proud of these young people from that Pro Start program, and it's more than the cooking. This particular group presented their business management plan, talked about opening their own business and what their plan was and could, were interviewed by all of these people nationally, and achieved a first-place recognition, which is not easy to do. So, we wanted to congratulate those Pro Start winners at that point.
Outstanding. Yeah. We'll look forward to hearing more about it at SuperNews.
Yes.
Next meeting. Yes. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Vouchet?
I think that's it for today.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Campbell, a seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor, signify by say an aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.